...this evening and taking part in the board meeting. We're gonna start off, before the meeting officially starts, with a invitation from Dr. Rollins.
Thank you, Randy. Let's pray together. Dear God, we ask your blessings on tonight's meeting. Help each of us to focus our thoughts and actions on improved services for all of our young people. Our purpose is their learning. This work is important. It's essential that each of us do our best work every day in order for each of our students to have an opportunity to do their best work every day. We thank you for our parents and our patrons, for our business leaders and community partners, and we thank you for our teachers and administrators and support staff. Again, we pray that you would help each of us understand that our efforts count and that as we work as a team, we're better positioned to serve all of our children. Dear God, we thank you for the blessings that you provide each of us. Amen.
All right, now we're gonna do our pledge of allegiance. Spencer Chang, if you come down here and lead it for us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, two minutes. Okay, with that, I would like to officially call the meeting to order. First thing we need to do is find out if our agenda will stand as presented?
It would, Mr. President.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Cook, a second by Mr. Luttrell, to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, board, we've had the minutes from the previous meeting for a few days now, and I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to look over those. Are there any changes or corrections that need to be made to last month's minutes? All right. All right, we have a motion for Mr. Oenby, a second for Mr. Williams to accept the minutes from last month's meeting. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This is the time of the meeting where we encourage our patrons of Springdale. Anybody that wants to come forward and talk about any issues, now's the time. Please be aware that we would like you to keep it brief and also understand that we can take no action this evening about anything that's talked about. Is there anybody out there that would like to come to the board? Great. All right. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Rollins and we'll get into the meat of the program.
Mr. President, let me invite our student representative from Springdale High School to come back and visit with us. Spencer, will you please do that? Board, if you look on page 13 of your agenda, there's just a brief summary of Spencer's experiences at Springdale High. He's a senior this year. His parents are Joseph and Tamera Chang. He's president of the Springdale High School Student Council. He's in the medical academy at the school. He excels in the classroom. He's currently enrolled in German III, Anatomy and Physiology, Abnormal Psychology, College Algebra, AP Literature and Composition. You've got a full schedule, don't you?
Yes, sir.
That is just great. Well, we are very, very proud of you. In addition to that, he's a member, as you can see, of the Springdale High School Swim and Dive Team.
Yes, sir.
So we would welcome any comments that you'd like to make about how things are going at school or just share your thoughts with the board.
All right. Thank you. Thank you guys for having me here today. Like you said, my name's Spencer Chang. I am in the 12th grade at Springdale High School. I just wanted to give a brief, a brief thank you to the, to you guys, first of all, for everything that you do for Springdale High School and just the Springdale public schools in general. Also to the Springdale High School faculty. They definitely helped me excel, not only in the classroom, but as a person and life in general. And they teach me more than, you know, the math, the German, the anatomy. They teach me how to be a better person and I really am thankful for that. I also wanna talk about some of my more memorable moments at Springdale. Definitely the swim meets that we go to and traveling and everything, that's always a fun time. Always make a lot of fun memories there. Also, leading my first pep rally as student council president. Just getting everyone, you know, in the school spirit is really what, I guess, what I live for. It's fun to see everyone out of their seats and, you know, going, going crazy for the school. It's really fun to see that. Like you said, I'm enrolled in College Algebra, abnormal psychology, German III, AP Literature and Anatomy and Physiology. So I do kinda have a full schedule, but it's nothing that I can't handle, I don't feel like. I feel like I have a good support system. My mom, my sister, they're always there for me. And then, of course, my friends, my family, and then these teachers at Springdale. Do you guys have any questions or anything?
Board?
Well, I think it's always nice if we know what your plans are for next year.
So I plan, I've applied to three colleges so far. University of Missouri, Kansas City, and Independence, Missouri. I've also applied to Pitt State in Pittsburgh, Kansas, and also UCLA in California. I've heard from UMKC and Pitt State. They're interested in me, but they haven't sent me any formal letters or anything like that. But they have emailed me, they've invited me to many college visits and everything, which I plan to go to next month. At UMKC, I'm going to apply to a medical program there. It's a six-year medical program. I'll get my bachelor's and my medical degree after my sixth year, instead of going for two extra years after my master's. So they'll kind of cram in the medical classes along with my bachelor's degree. So I thought that was a pretty decent option.
What type of doctor are you interested in becoming?
I don't wanna specialize yet until I figure some things out first. I don't wanna waste any money or waste any time going into a specific field if I'm not sure that's where I wanna go. So I was thinking maybe doing just general practicing. And then, if I wanted to specialize after that, it would be easier to go from there.
When did you start school in Springdale? Did you start here as a kindergartner?
Yes, sir. I went to George Elementary and then J.O. Kelly, then George Junior High, and then Springdale.
What are your events in swim?
Pardon?
What do you swim?
I swim all of the events. So I've been captain for the past two years. As a junior, I was captain, and then as a senior, I'm captain as well. But I'm kind of well-rounded, so he just kinda puts me wherever he needs me, wherever he thinks I'll score the most. So he usually puts me in as many relays as he can and then as many events as he can as well.
What do you enjoy the most?
That's a tough question. Probably just the relays, just because it's fun to have my teammates supporting me and also supporting them as well. Cause it's, I like to be able to carry my teammates, but I also like them carrying me as well. So I think it's fun.
What, what made you decide to do German rather than Spanish or French or?
I thought that German was a little bit more, it was different. And I wanted something different and I, I'm still interested in the Spanish culture and everything and I have a bunch of friends that try to teach me Spanish every now and then. I'm not any, I'm not any good at it, but it's fun to just try to get that. But I just thought German was different and I'm all about trying new things. It's definitely, I feel like one of my better choices. I love learning German.
Board, anybody else?
Let's talk, let's talk about that abnormal psych class.
So my teacher is Lena Mills. She's an amazing teacher. She was my teacher last year for medical terminology. She's also the head of the medical academy, which I've been involved in for three years. She's an amazing woman. She teaches abnormal psychology, which is the study of different mental disorders. And it's a semester-long, so it's two quarters. We learn about, right now, we're studying somatosphorm disorders, which are disorders with hypochondriasis, pain disorder, just other things like that. So we just studied the different mental disorders, we study anorexia, bulimia, depression, and all those sort of kinda things.
Let's do a little survey of the audience. You want to? How many had an abnormal psych class somewhere in your background? Now, here's, here's something you might wanna take down. Now, how many of you, as you went through that class and you studied the various traits of those, of those abnormal conditions, said, "Gosh, I have that"? I expect we've all been a part of that experience, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Great job. We're so very proud of you.
Thank you for having me.
You wanna introduce your mom and sister? Yes, yes.
That's my mother on the left. Her name's Camilla Chang. And that's my sister, my, the youngest girl, but I'm the youngest in the family. Her name's Jasmine.
Well, we appreciate you being here this evening. And I am on the medical academy board, so maybe at the end of the year, I'll get to see your presentation. So look forward to that. You bet. Thanks for being here.
Mr. President, I expect we would all like to congratulate Mr. Oenby for his reelection to the board.
He squeaked by here.
We're very glad that you're continuing this role. And normally, at this time of the year, following the school election, Mr. President, we elect officers for the new year. If we had a recommendation from a member of the board to select our officer for the new year, it'd be appropriate at this time.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Hutchinson. So I would like to propose for our officers for the coming year, Randy Hutchinson as president, Jeff Williams as vice president, and Kevin Oenby as our secretary.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Ms. McFetrich to have myself serve for another year as president, have Mr. Williams be the vice president, and Mr. Oenby be the secretary. Is there any further discussion about that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? How about that, unanimous? All right.
Congratulations, y'all. Thank you very much. All right, let me invite our Dr. Slocum, if she would come forward.
Good evening. Congratulations. We are here tonight and we are gonna be recognizing three Springdale students, the, the top of the top for our academic achievement. And I'm gonna ask if they will please stand and also have their parents stand, and I'd like to recognize them. Jenna Durfee, she's the daughter of James and Lisa Long. And the schools that she has attended are Walker, Helen Tyson, Southwest Junior High, and Harbor High School. If you will, please give her a hand. Alexander Aramev, who is the son of Nikolai and Anna Aramev. He also attended Young. He attended Helston, and he attended Central. And right now is currently a student at Harbor High School, so please give him a hand. And Mary Emma Hignight, from Springdale High School, who may be joining us shortly. Right here. Mom and dad are in the back, daughter of Mike and Marjorie Hignight. And you got to see Ms. Marjorie Hignight on the video last month when we were looking in her classroom. So she attended Walker, Helen Tyson, Southwest, and is currently a student at SHS, so please give her a hand. And I'd like for them, if we can, invite them to come over to say a few words. And so, guys, if you wanna come on over?
That's what Dr. Rollins tells us. Hi, I'm Jenna Durfee, and I'm a senior at Harbor High School. And I would just like to thank everyone for inviting me here. And I would just like to say that I'm so grateful to be a semifinalist. And I'm so blessed just to have the teachers that I've had throughout the year and to go to Springdale Schools, because they, they are, in my opinion, far better than the schools I went to in Colorado. But, so.
What, what's next for your plans?
Oh, um.
If you don't, sorry, Randy.
I want to go, I do want to attend college, and I want to get a major in psychology. And right now, I'm focusing on clinical psychology, but I'm not sure if I have a focus beyond that. Like, I'm not sure if I want to focus on children or certain disorders, but.
Do you know where you wanna go?
I want to go to the College of William and Mary in Williamsburg, Virginia.
That's a good one. Well, good luck in that.
We're very pleased to present you with a beautiful certificate, just memorabilia, to commemorate this recognition. And I know there'll be so many others along the way. We're very, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for having me here. And like Jenna said, I've been blessed to be in Springdale Schools. I've never had a teacher to complain about, and that's really why I'm here right now, cause I've had such good teachers to just help me excel far past my own expectations. And just thank you.
What are your plans?
I'm, there are a few colleges that I'm applying to right now. One of my top choices is Bryn Mawr College, just outside Philadelphia. And I'd like to major in either history or creative writing. And I'm not sure, like, specifically what I will be studying, but I'd like to learn broadly, no matter what I do, for a specific major and minor.
So are you guys trying to have a contest to see who gets the farthest away from home? I mean, goodness gracious. How did you find out about that college?
They'd sent me a few things, and then they showed up on some lists when I searched best colleges for writing, best liberal arts colleges, and they're on the list of, they meet full demonstrated need, so that's always good.
Well, good luck in that.
Well, thank you.
There, Emma, we have the certificate for you as well. Please know how proud we are of each of you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alexer Meov, and again, I'd like to thank you all for having me today. And I just wanna say that Springdale Schools has built an amazing foundation for my learning. And teachers like Ms. Waits, Mr. Fink, Ms. Henderson, Ms. Irvin, they've all helped me build my understanding and just learn unintuitively and make my own, my own interpretation of the world and how it works. And I wouldn't be here without them, and I'm super thankful for everything you guys do for us and to have a good school district. And my plans are to go on to study biochemistry or biomedical engineering with a pre-med focus. And I'd like to go to Wash U in St. Louis, U Chicago, or U of A, cause I don't wanna leave my family.
Great. Well, wish you luck in all of it.
Thank you, sir.
Congrats, Wash U's Alexander.
Thank you.
Give them all.
We also have a Girl Scout in our midst, and it's, and it's not just me, which I was, right? Rona Masha, if you will please come up. Rona Masha is a student at Southwest Junior High School who has received the Silver Award from the Girl Scouts for her project titled Marshallese Celebrations From the Atolls to the Ozarks. And her exhibit is being displayed currently at the Shiloh Museum. So do you know the handshake? Okay. I was just gonna see if she knew the Girl Scout handshake. Yeah. It's awesome. It's awesome.
Again, my name is Rona Masha. I'm 14 and I attend Southwest Junior High. I first started, well, this is only my first year in Girl Scouts, so, you know, I just sort of jumped into things because they threw so many opportunities at me. And I was, I was happy to accept them all because it took me this far and made me become, let's say, a more, more stronger person. I mean, it gave me leadership skills I finally have today. And I'm just grateful for the family, my family that supported me along the way and everyone who's contributed, contributed to helping me in the project. And thank you guys especially for inviting me here, for the recognition. And that's all I had to say. So any questions?
Board?
I got to hear all about you last week at our Kiwanis meeting. Your leader was there and shared your award with us and talked about what a wonderful leader you're becoming, and we're really very proud of you.
Yeah, I'm sorry I couldn't make it.
Yeah, well, continue, because I hear now the next step is, it's like an Eagle Scout Award. So you're on your way, and that is extremely important when you're applying for jobs and applying for colleges. So keep up the good work. We're really proud of you.
I was curious also, have you been in Springdale since you were a kindergartner, or did you come in?
I, I started in, well, yes, I was in Springdale at first. Then I hopped, like, went to Missouri, then back in Fayetteville, and then, yeah, I'm back in Springdale.
Well, you stay here as long as you want. That's great.
Is this your mom?
Yes, that's my mom over there. And my sister is right there.
Congratulations.
Same color shirt as my mom.
Well, congratulations. That's a great deal.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good evening. It's always an honor to get to acknowledge the work that our FFA and our Idris students have done over the course of the last semester, and then certainly over the summer. So when we talk about competing, they're competing in categories from art to agriculture, and a lot of categories in between. So let me make sure that we can acknowledge their work. Let me introduce Mr. Chad Burkett and Mr. Seth Jones from Springdale and Harbor High Schools and their students in our Idris programs.
Come on down.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity for y'all to come, to come up here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Thank you to the administration staff, the board, our principals. I know Springdale feels the same way. Without y'all's support, we don't have the ability to help these kids achieve greater things than just sitting in a classroom, but go out and actually get hands-on learning with supervised agricultural experiences. And that's what we do at the fairs. We, they get the opportunity to put their time that they've spent during the summer, early in the spring, the day-in, day-out efforts of messing with livestock and animals, greenery, whatever it is that they present at the fair that they've worked all summer on. So we appreciate the opportunity for them to do that. And I'll allow the students to say their name and tell you what they competed in and what they won. And, but first, let's, go ahead.
My name is Danielle Moore, and I showed my rabbit in the Harlequin class, and I won Best of Breed with him.
Hello, my name's Heather Stamper. I showed my American Blue, and she was, was a grand champion.
Now, what is that?
Second place overall.
But what, what is an American Blue?
Um, it's just the type of rabbit. It's like a.
Rabbit, okay.
Okay, yes.
You gotta remember, we're, we're not, we don't, we don't understand that stuff, so.
I'm Allison Moreland, and I showed three registered Beef Master heifers and then a registered Beef Master bull. I got champion of my breed and reserve champion, and I got seventh overall and $900 in the sale.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm Evan Finer. I raised broilers, and I showed them in the fair, and I got grand champion.
I'm Mia Wallace. I showed three different hogs. I got fourth in my class with my York, first in my class with my dark cross, and like, third in the class with the ham. And I was awarded $450 in the premium show.
Nice.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hythen. I showed my chickens, and I got best, or best in class on both of my birds. I showed a hen and a rooster, and I got senior showmanship in poultry.
What do you have there?
Oh, this is actually my lab coat that I won for senior showmanship.
Okay.
That is great.
Very nice.
Very proud of those students. I brought a few of my students along tonight. We ended up having 39 total contestants with a little over 70, 71, 72 fair projects. Springdale, obviously, is a more urbanized school with, since our students don't live on farms, and many of them don't. But we've really focused on arts or things that they're really interested in. And one of our big pushes this year is what would they do from their native country that is related to agriculture? And most of them actually celebrate, you know, agriculture in different times of the year with a lot of jewelry, arts, and things of that. So we entered a huge area of native arts, particularly Marshallese jewelry, both necklaces, native cultural things, that is very agriculturally based and also viable as jobs within the Marshall Islands. And we had some Latino students from background. They made a lot of pottery, they entered necklaces. And what was cool about it is we actually did this during our advisory time, where we have Club Day. And so it was cool for me because I got to sit down, and you know, I've made a clay mug, like I was making in Mexico, and, you know, I made some hair berets and gave them to my wife. And so it was a really cool experience to get these kids engaged in agriculture. They were able to exhibit at the fair in a non-traditional sense. It's not discounting from animals. We'd love for them all to have an animal. You know, we'd love for them all to be able to take part in that, but some of them is simply not possible. But I wanna note that, very proud of our students. Also, before I introduce my kids, I wanna brag on Mr. Jones. He volunteered his time in the Futurity Auction. And our kids that place in the county, they auction their animals. They get to keep the animals, and the Futurity money goes to the kids to support the project, scholarship funds. And he works during that auction. He worked very hard for our kids. And I firmly believe that he boosted sales for our students, both in Springdale, but all the county students. You know, he really worked hard. Really proud of him, so wanna acknowledge that. I brought along four students tonight. Some of our kids had to work other activities. But I wanna introduce Zoe Clark. She's also the president of our Springdale FFA chapter. Josie O'Kelly, and her parents are here. Eric Ambissy O'Kelly, and they have a long background in farming. Cassandra Hallway and Max Wilson.
Hi, I'm Zoe. I entered Peach Preserves, and I won first place.
My name is Josie O'Kelly, and I showed a grade A Jersey heifer, and I got fourth in showmanship and top of my class. And then I showed a commercial beef heifer and got fourth in my class.
Hi, I'm Cassandra. I unloaded together a steel owl and won first place.
Yep, ornamental art. Cassandra took welding, it's kinda cool, so they can build ornamental stuff. And so she took junk, formed an owl, and painted it. And so if you just Google junk art, and you see a little owl, we copied it off of the internet, she did it all herself. So, accomplished welder. Go ahead, Max.
Hi, I'm Max Wilson, and I showed boilers and got first place.
One other quick note, our FFA chapter enters a group project this year. This past year, we built four, manufactured, fabricated four steel trailers, in addition to many other projects, and our club as a whole won grand champion overall in mechanics. And so we received a $100 check for our FFA chapter to fund further welding projects. But really proud of all the kids at Springdale. We always get comments that while we're at the fair, bragging on our school administration, can't say enough good things. Our school admin always comes to the fairs as a group and sees all the kids' projects. And that's not common with a lot of the other school districts. It's not shortchanging, but our folks, all our superintendents came, toured our projects. It really lets the kids and the community know that we have full community support, and I thank you guys so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time we have a winning preserve, you need to bring.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
She does a good job.
Tell me on that. Are you, what, what grade are you in? I'll see you not coming back next year, doggone it.
Unless I send her, like, if Max is good now.
There you go.
And when we go out to his place this summer, and I encourage you guys, you know, send you an invitation. We do the home visits this summer. We take admin, you know, and we always get something. I take Mr. Jinks, he likes going to Max's house because he gets salsa, honey. And then when I, when I visit with his wife at the rodeo or something, I said, "How was that honey?", and she said, "What honey?" He doesn't share it, does he?
This is just a small representation.
Yes, sir.
I took my grandson to look at all the animals, and they were Harvard and Springdale students.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yes, sir. We had hundreds, one other one.
All the hogs and.
Everywhere.
And there were ribbons everywhere.
Yes, sir. Our kids do an excellent job. And you know, many of our kids, if they have animals, they also have other things that are agriculturally involved, and so it's hard to get them here. A lot of our kids work. Ben Anderson, he had reserve grand champion steer. You know, he's at college right now. You know, a lot of these kids, most of our kids that work in mechanics are working after school. We have some that are also attending. One young lady, she's really interested in horses. She showed, she's taking horse shooting class at NTI. So our kids are constantly trying to improve their education, or they're working.
How many kids, approximately, how many kids are in the program?
Between both schools, I'd say we've got 400. Between both schools, I'd say we've got 400-
Holy cow.
-ish students, counting post-graduation seniors, because they can participate the full year after they graduate. So we have, you know, roughly four of 25 in class, counting a few graduates. It's very similar. We're reaching probably eight, nine hundred kids.
Eight or nine hundred kids, wow. I had no idea there was that much.
And honestly, and I'm not just selling a plug, but agriculture and the things that we do, we have, you know, food, we have plants, we have the animals, we have the mechanics. And the kids just like doing the things that we're able to offer in our classes. It's an easy sell. People love agriculture, celebration of life. We really thank you guys.
We appreciate you two doing everything you do. Because obviously, these are the things that kids can use later in life.
They love. Class is easy, you know. I know teachers struggle in English in some of those classes. Our classes are easy because really, we're just there to kind of show them what to do. But they get to do everything. It's like Mr. Rollins also, he does a good job and always supports us.
Blue jackets, pretty special.
Thanks for being here, parents.
Board, we're on item E on the agenda. I know that you're looking forward to tonight's presentation. The academic coach position really spring from the vision of the board and I'm so thankful and appreciative of the work that's being done. And I know Dr. Smith will introduce Ms. Campbell appropriately, but we're off to a great start. Marcia, that'll be you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins, members of the board. I did want to recognize, I noticed there were some individuals out here. And so I just want to give a shout out to the leadership of Springdale, the class of the cohort of 22. And that's great that they're here. And then we also have a group of students from Arkansas Tech that are here. So I can't imagine they're here at the best school district meeting they could possibly be at. So we welcome them. As you guys will recall, and if Ms. Campbell will come down, please. As you'll recall, we started the process early, beginning of the school year, trying to put together a description of what the academics coach would do. After that was approved, we moved forward into hiring. We interviewed quite a few different people and we landed on somebody homegrown, which was Ms. Campbell. She has done a phenomenal job. She, first day out, I mean, it was like she already had a plethora of information pulling together and she already had designs on how she was going to move forward. The description is in your handouts. One of the things that Ms. Campbell and I have been really working on is we wanted to make sure that we addressed our district's big audacious goals, three and four, which is raising our ACT score and also our prestigious scholarships. But in addition to that, we really wanted to have two very clear focuses. And that is, one, we wanted to make sure that parents had the information that they needed to help their child be successful in high school and then transitioning into whatever they chose to after. The other thing was we wanted to make sure that the students have the support within the school to make accurate decisions based on all the information available. And so Ms. Campbell has done a great job and I've asked her to speak on one or two of the items that she's working on right now. So we're very excited.
Thanks, Dr. Smith. Good evening. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you. When I began this position, one of the first things Dr. Smith and I started doing was networking with other schools, colleges, and community resources. And from that experience, we gained some successful career and college planning programs that are in existence. We also then began looking at what we're doing in Springdale schools and then working to improve some of those services. I'm going to talk about just two support systems that we've addressed. One of those being the college support system and the development of a college prep session for our seniors. Many priority deadlines for scholarships are November and December. And based on this information, and in order to help our students to meet those deadlines and to have well-prepared applications, we decided to partner with the University of Arkansas to provide a workshop for our students and parents. The workshop, the staff came in and we also had support staff from Springdale schools. But we worked on academic resumes, helping them to build that, also with the essays, writing those processes, also talking about financial aid aspects with the parents. Interested students gave us their first college choices. And from there, I took that information and gathered application processes, admission requirements, scholarship requirements, other essays, resumes, what's required, in order to personalize it for the students. And during those work sessions, our staff worked with the students on colleges where they were planning to apply. And we did have some students who were not able to attend, but they submitted their essays and resumes and we provided feedback. The response was very positive from our parents and students, feeling that the information was very valuable and useful. And since that time, we've established a Google Classroom for this group of students where all of that college research information is there, as well as a timeline and a calendar for those deadlines for those colleges that they were interested in doing. For future, we plan to do this between the junior and senior summer year and also to follow up in the fall. The second area is the support systems for the school, especially provided with preparing for the PSAT. Next Wednesday, we will be giving the PSAT to some of our ninth graders, all of our 10th graders, and a few of our 11th graders. And the PSAT is that qualifying assessment for our 11th graders for the national merit semifinalists. We have been working with students, parents, and staff. With the parents, or with students, what we've done is opened the PSAT bootcamps that we've had both at Harbor and at Springdale High. We've opened that to any secondary student. Based on their schedule, they could attend one at Harbor or Springdale in order to help with their accommodating their busy schedules. With teachers, we've provided resources and support. And with the parents, we've attended those PSAT parent nights. And some things that you have that we've included in your agenda are some handouts that we've created for parents and students. Our next step is just to continue to meet with successful schools and look at other areas that we can address with college, in preparing our kids to be college and career ready. We'll mainly be focusing on school support and the communications piece. So thank you for that time. Yes.
The support enthusiasm from parents, has that been what you've expected, better or worse? Or what's been the reaction?
Yes, it was very, very supportive. We had our first session on September 24 and we had a good turnout. And parents were very pleased with the piece that we talked to them about. Okay, these are deadlines that you need to look at. These are scholarships that you can look at to apply for students and then the process to go about. So it's been very well received.
How many ninth graders do you expect to take the PSAT next week?
Oh, man. Probably 250.
Really?
Wow.
Is that about, or maybe just a little bit more than that?
Is that just a practice?
Right, it's just the practice part of that, yes. I don't know that, I have a finalized count on that, but.
I noticed you've mentioned Springdale High School and Harbor, but how are we including the I-School than our alternative high school?
Right. We did have, they did have parent nights, I'm sorry, parent nights. And those informations were handed out to those parents and students as well.
So you're including all sides then?
Yes. I actually even have gone to the School of Innovation and worked with those ninth graders and 10th graders, talking about the PSAT and the importance of taking that and providing information for them as well.
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
As the School of Innovation moves forward to 11th and 12th grade, that will open up expanding. But we've already started building those relationships, so there's more community there. I just can't even speak the praises of enough of Ms. Campbell. She calls me early in the morning. That's when we have an opportunity to talk. And it's always with enthusiasm and an excitement of something new. Right now, she's working on a great way to do some celebrations within the district, so, and getting some more information out and recognition. So we're moving full forward on that. The next item on my agenda, item E2, is literacy across the curriculum. And at the last school board luncheon at Sonora Middle School, we've got a little understanding of what this was. But Ms. Trudy Spencer, who's the PE coach out at Sonora Middle School, is trying an activity where students are engaged in a physical activity while at the same time being involved in an academic activity. And the goal is that if you do something physical, it's going to activate your brain and allow you to retain information. So right now, they've got some new equipment that we have the luxury of going in and trying. It was quite intense for some of us, but the students were in there, learning the new materials, and then they were going to start bringing in the academic. One of the things that I think is pretty powerful is they're gathering data. And they did choose a random sample of students to do this with. And they're going to look at their assessments and see what impact it has on their scores. And so of course, Dr. Rollins immediately said, "This is great. We've got to look at ways of expanding this." And so that is our next focus and figuring out how to do that. But she's done a great job. And she has been so positive through the whole thing. And I've learned a lot just in the few minutes that I was able to visit her lab. Very exciting. Are there any questions? I think you heard a lot about it at the school board luncheon.
Yeah, I think it's just amazing when we look at the handout that's in our agenda and it, 1,100 shares on this particular story, over 100,000 video views of it, 7,300 reactions, comments, and shares. I don't know, Rick, are you out there somewhere? Okay, I mean-
The most we ever had on our Facebook was the martial arts video. We had 132,000. We only had three that ever had over 100,000. That ended up with 232,000 people looked at it. The great thing was, what we think of as routine, although Marcia's explaining it's new, for a lot of the country, this is all new. You were getting responses, comments from Miami, from Nebraska, from Wisconsin, saying, "We need to try that in our classroom." So that was a really good one.
Good job.
And it's titled as literacy across the curriculum. And so if you realize they're talking about reading and math and science while they're in there doing the activity, it really does impact a lot of different areas of education. So very powerful. Any questions? Thank you.
Great job, Marcia.
Oh, I can't wait. I watched that today and I'm glad I was sitting here. This was so depressing.
Thank you.
What I just handed you was a white paper that Arkansas Advocates for Children and Families produced in July of 2015. And I especially want to first draw your attention to the four bullets at the bottom, where it talks about the importance of pre-K. As we're seeing the, as our poverty rises, we're seeing the gap widen between our children. We know that by the time a child starts to school, you've heard about the 30 million word gap, that there is a 30 million word gap between those students who are in professional, the children of middle class and upper class, there will be a 30 million word gap between those and children of poverty. So it becomes very important, what we do in pre-K becomes very important. It's good for the workforce. It gets our moms and dads the ability to get out there and work. It's good for the workforce of tomorrow. And it helps us reduce some costs. What the Arkansas advocates are doing now is they are creating some videos about what goes on in pre-K classrooms, what goes on in pre-K. And they've chosen Springdale to work with them. So a couple of weeks ago, you see Ms. Wolfenbarger out here in the audience, and Ms. Fleeman, and a couple of teachers and I went to our Early Childhood Center and we were on their videos. They interviewed us about the importance of pre-K. And now, on Thursday, we will have some legislators who are coming to our pre-K at Jones with some more of the Arkansas advocates to hear about, okay, you have pre-K here at Jones, now what impact does that have on the children and families when they get to kindergarten? And what we are finding is our schools that have pre-Ks in them really, really like that. That gives them an extra year to make that connection with the families. We're seeing our children who have been through our pre-K, when they get to pre-K, they're ready to learn. They've had some of those connections like we showed you last month, where they are beginning to hear some of those letter sounds and beginning to connect some of those with the letter itself. So our pre-K is very important. And Dr. Rollins wanted me to share with you that our pre-K, we are doing some great things in our pre-K. He also wanted me to share with you what our new goal for next year is. And yeah, I was glad I was sitting down when he shared this with me. But he would like for us to get to 1,500 children in our pre-K by next year. I will tell you this, we are, the last time I talked to Ms. Wolfenbarger was about a week ago. And at that point in time, we were 11 children from being full. And she said we had had several children enrolling that she had not even counted in that count. So when she gets up here in a minute, in a few minutes to talk about math, we may have to get her also to share where we are in that count. Because if we are not full, we are very, very, very close.
How many more classrooms will 1,500?
Uh, well, there's 20 children. So let's see, that's about another 160 kids. I guess that's eight more children, eight more classrooms. And it is, we are seeing more and more, even three-year-olds in our program now, because we have enough slots. And it's fascinating to watch a child when they enter as a three-year-old, and then when they exit at the end of their four-year-old year, the skills that they have, the people's skills that they have. They go from being a child who doesn't know how to ask for something or how to play along with another child, to being a child who will even say, "I would like to play with you the next time we get to go out and play. Would you like to do that too?" Those are the kinds of skills that we're giving our children in our pre-K. Questions that I can answer for you?
That's great. I'm kind of curious, from a statewide perspective, is there a threat for money to come away from pre-K? Or is the threat that there's just not enough money to add 160 more kids in Springdale and different places?
Well, and you know, we are completely grant funded. We get money through the Arkansas Better Chance Program, through, we've got a couple of grants through the Endeavor Foundation, through, and a couple of other grants. So what we do is grant funded. So what the Arkansas advocates are wanting to do now is to provide money for pre-Ks in Arkansas, from the state. And that would be a tremendous help to us so we can reach our goal of 1,500. Because our pre-K folks, Ms. Fleeman and Ms. Wolfenbarger, they watch those grants very closely because we know that they do have a sunset. So we know we have to watch those very closely and think about how are we going to replace that? And how can we expand to get 1,500 slots? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Great job. Mr. Shafir?
Before I introduce two new teachers in our district, and they have good stories to tell you, I need to tell you. If you watch KNWA or any of the stations early in the morning, you need to turn it on between 5:00 and 7:00 tomorrow morning. Dana Winter will be at Helston Middle School. And today, I discovered a program that I thought was pretty good when I told her she ought to come cover it, and it was better than I ever dreamed. There are four colleges, University of Arkansas, Stanford, Howard, and the University of Illinois, who got a collective grant to work on some thermal electric projects. And they chose Helston is the only school in the country that's being used as a model for this because one of the teachers out there was actually involved in writing the science curriculum for the new science curriculum for the country. So they were out there today and they're doing all these experiments. And two University of Arkansas people were out there. And so Dana will be live from Helston tomorrow morning doing reports on that. And I think at 6:30, they're actually going to have some of the students out there with her. So you'll enjoy that. Just thought I'd give you that tip if you're up that early and want to watch that. Before the year started, we had the task of writing some stories about first year teachers. And many of y'all have read these stories, but we thought it'd be really nice for you to see them in person. And so Edgar Morales, I interviewed, I think, on his second day on the job. He's at Southwest Junior High. He's a fascinating story. He's going to come up and tell you his story. But let me say this, he moved to Arkansas when he was in the 11th grade and didn't speak English. And you can see how young he is now. That means only a few years later, he's teaching math at Southwest Junior High. So Edgar, why don't you come up and tell them a little bit?
Good evening. My name is Edgar Morales. And so I just want to, I just want to tell my story a little bit. And so I, first of all, I want to give thanks to God for every single opportunity that- for every single opportunity that he has given me, coming to the United States, being the first one of them. And so, I came to 11th grade in 2007, and it was really difficult, because I had to learn math, science, even Spanish in a, in a language that I didn't speak. So, it was difficult at first, but thanks to teachers, family members, I was able to graduate from high school. And then, my transition to college also was difficult. And so, the same story repeated, because college was new to, new to me, new to my parents, my family. I was the first one to go to college in my family. So, it was, it was really, really difficult. And then, when I came to, to the U of A, and it was also hard, because I came by myself. I lived in a, in an apartment by myself, because I have, I have, I have no family up here. So, that's, that was also hard. But thanks to, again, teachers, my family members, and I was able to graduate from, from college. And now, I'm working at Southwest Junior High. And what I like the most about my, about teaching in Springdale is that I don't only make connection with my students, but also with parents. I call them, they sometimes call me, and they say, "We're so happy that there's no language barrier between us, so we can talk about my student and how he or she is doing." And so, that's what I really like about teaching. And I'm, I'm so happy to be here.
That's great.
Thanks.
A great story. I read it, and it's just, it's amazing what, what you've done. So, congratulations, and keep up the good work. Hope to see you back here many times.
Thanks.
You're a huge inspiration to your students. That's just so exciting.
Good luck.
What I didn't tell you was, you've read the story. He decided to go to the U of A, comes up here a week in advance. You can't find an apartment a week in advance. So, he had a relative, what, in Fort Smith? He commuted from Fort Smith for, what, about a semester until he could get a place to live. And that's pretty amazing, isn't it? That's amazing. Well, our next story isn't quite that, the same as that, but it's someone else that really wanted to teach in this district. Her name is Rebecca Grimes. She's teaching at Tyson Middle School. So, Rebecca, come on up and tell your story.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca, and I teach 6th and 7th grade English at Helen Tyson Middle School. I also am a co-teacher in the Language Academy. I was very surprised when Mr. Rick Schaefer asked to interview me. I am from Redfield, Arkansas. Have any of you heard of Redfield?
What is it?
Redfield.
Redfield? No, what's that?
It's little bitty. It's south Arkansas. It's south of Little Rock. And it's about a population of 1,000. We have no streetlights. It was a big deal when Subway came to town my senior year of high school. And I graduated from John Brown University, and I wanted to go to Cilombe, because it was the big town. It was the big city with 15,000. So, I went to JBU, and I graduated in December of 2015. And I was very nervous going into my internship, because I was placed at Harbor High. And I can remember pulling into the parking lot that first day and thinking, "This is bigger. My entire town could probably live very happily in the walls of Harbor." It was so big. And I was in the ELD department. I taught 11th and 12th graders there. And I went in knowing that I was going to teach them so much English, and we were going to have such a good time. And they taught me more than I ever imagined teaching them. I was very impressed with Springdale, and not only having so much diversity, but celebrating that. My students taught me about their cultures, and they brought me all of their food. I had more papoosas that year and pumpkin rolls from the Marshall Islands than I knew what to do with. It was incredible. And so, I can remember leaving Harbor High one day. It was getting close to the end of my internship, and I called my mom, because I had always planned on just going back to southern Arkansas. And I called my mom, and I said, "Mama, I, I think I'm going to stay here. I want to teach in Springdale. I, I love the diversity. I love that that's celebrated, and everyone takes ownership of that." And so, I graduated in December and was very worried about where I was going to find a job mid-year. And I got in contact, someone got in contact with me about a long-term subbing position that opened up at Tyson Middle School. And at the time, I was certified to teach 7th, 12th, English. And I met with Ms. Stephanie Anderson, the principal there. She invited me to have an interview. And one of the first things that she said is, "Here at Helen Tyson and here at Springdale, we love diversity. We love, we honor that, and we really encourage that. We want people here that are also on board with that." And I said, "Oh, yes, ma'am, I am." And so, I long-term subbed in 6th grade English, and I loved middle school so much. I actually graduated college in December and went back to school. And now, I am ESL endorsed, and I've just finished up my 4th through 8th middle school English endorsement. And I have loved being at Springdale, and I have loved being at Helen Tyson Middle School and working in the Language Academy with those sweet students.
That's a great story. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Well, it was an honor to speak, and I look forward to working with all of you more. Thank you.
I'll just say in conclusion, you see, well, I have the best job in the district. I get to go around and talk to these people and write their stories. It's fantastic, so thank you for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes, the screen is coming down, so we're already off to a great start. So, we are going to be talking about mathematics in Springdale School District as a whole. And our focus this time, of course, is centered around the idea of mathematics, but it's also centered around the idea of beginning with the end in mind. So, we're going to be looking at and learning about some different methods and methodologies that we have in place. When I came to Springdale three years ago, I spent my first year really analyzing and looking at what is happening and what we're doing within our, our school district in terms of math and what that looks like. And in the second year I was here, we made some, some changes. And we've continued to make changes based on what our data is telling us. We had taken a, a specific path in, in mathematics, and we're in the process of kind of changing what that looks like. So, you're going to see some of that today, and we'll be talking about what that's going to look like in our curriculum development. So, how do we go from learning math practices to actually applying what those math practices look like? And where we started in this concept of what does it need to look like is based on eight math practices. And the math practices, as you can see there, and I won't read them all to you, but it's the idea of students being able to reason abstractly and quantitatively, for them to be able to construct those arguments, be able to have a discussion with their classmates, and then be able to model that in some way in the classroom and beyond the classroom. Of course, we want them to use those tools strategically, and we want them to have precision, which is what mathematics absolutely requires, so that they understand not only the, the complexity of it, but the structure of it, and then be able to explain that and be able to apply that for the reasoning that needs to occur in, in a later process. So, Dr. Smith, as you know, is, is one of my teammates, and she is the guru of all that is mathematics. And she's going to be talking with you about what that looks like in terms of questioning and how we are moving students forward and moving teachers forward in the depth of knowledge. I'd just like to hit on three things. When we look at the mathematical practices, they've been around for quite some time. But three things I really want to point out is perseverance, be able to reason abstractly, and to construct an argument. And you think, "How does that align to math?" So, we're going to kind of take you through that. Before I do that, I want to make a connection to what we're doing and what the evaluation is. So, just a quick overview. Teachers in Springdale or in the state of Arkansas are evaluated using a TESS model, and that stands for Teacher Excellence and Support Systems. And in that assessment system, there are four very distinct domains. There's the planning and preparation, the professional responsibility, and then the last two are what are observable during an observation. So, the classroom environment and the instruction. Based on a lot of ga, data that was gathered last year, we really felt that as a curriculum instruction team, we needed to focus on two very specific things. And that was on questioning and discussion, which is also known as Domain 3B, and meaningful engagement, which is, or Component 3C. So, those were our very, very focused ideas. And you might say, "Well, why did you pick those two?" Well, if you'll look at the next slide, the ACT Aspire is part of the data that we look at. And as you know, a lot of students perform at certain levels, and we're trying to move every student forward. But we had to have a better understanding of what is the expectation of the ACT Aspire. If you will look at the yellow mark, and I try to make it as big as possible for you to see, but the questions in the ACT Aspire in mathematics range somewhere between 50% and almost 60% of the questions are asked at a DOK Level 3. And just as a reminder, DOK stands for Depth of Knowledge. So, how deeply are we going to go in in asking those questions? And if we don't reach that DOK Level 3 with our students, then we're going to be struggling at how we're going to answer the ACT Aspire. This information came out using last year's data and moving forward. So, this has not previously been available for us to, to look at. So, with that said, we knew we had to drive what we were doing in our professional development down to the student level. So, I wanted to just kind of give you a very basic example of the DOK 1 and 3, just as comparison. Please don't be insulted by this first question. I just was trying to pick a very simple, easy example to use. But one of the questions that might be asked in a DOK Level 1 question would be something along the lines of what's 1 plus 1? And a lot of times, a student might respond, and we will hear one response, and we might say, "Okay, the class has got it and moved on." But that's really not going to take students to the level that we need to be at when they're taking the ACT Aspire. We need to get them to think deeper. So, what happens if it was posed in this way? What happens if the student was asked to think about the question and answer to 1 plus 1? What is the out, what happens if we changed it slightly and said, "What is the outcome if you add 1 cup of Cheerios and 1 cup of milk? What would the outcome be?" And then, we go on to say, "You need to either write or discuss your answer, support your conclusion with evidence, and then, let's go a little further and have you give counterexamples and explain your answers." Well, if the teachers, the students are now engaged in having to have conversations about what this looks like, and the teacher's able to walk around the room and assess different groups of students, because everybody is participating, it takes them to a higher level. And if you have students that are struggling, the teacher goes over and gives guidance. They don't give the answer. They just make them think through different questions that might lead them in a direction. And as you can see, this might not have one right answer. It depends on how it is answered. So, very, very insightful questions. Any questions about that particular example that I've given?
Are you trying to get a third grader to rationalize that answer?
Think through it. Now, and, and you have to be very mindful, because asking a 1 plus 1 question might be a higher-level thinking question for a student in, in pre-K or kindergarten or first grade, but it's very, very low-level in an advanced Algebra II class. So, it, it does depend on the class level, depending on what the DOK level is. I think what we didn't talk about is you do have your note cards that are in front of you, so if you have other questions as they come up, use those note cards. We're going to show you a video from Ms. Jennifer Rami, and she's going to give you an overview of what that looks like for math. And again, listen to perseverance and reason.
We're excited about what's happening in mathematics in the Springdale School District. With the introduction of one-to-one technology and new standards, we are moving mathematics instruction into the 21st century. Working with the School of Innovation has shifted the idea of differentiation, simply in awareness of students' various learning styles, even further in the direction of personalization, where teachers aspire to create independent learners who set goals for themselves, monitor their own progress, and reflect on their own learning. With a focus on communication, collaboration, and problem-solving, our classrooms are filled with discussion and student thinking that reflect the skills needed for jobs in the future. Our teachers are harnessing the power of interactive math lessons using Desmos and GeoGebra to bring engaging, real-world applications of mathematics to the classroom. Students collaborate on math problems beyond the classroom and even beyond the school through the use of Google Docs, Google Slides, and Google Hangouts. Technology can be the tool that takes an otherwise traditional classroom to any time, anywhere, with anyone. This is just one more area where Springdale is on the forefront of educational innovation.
The next video we'd like to show you is with Travis Fink. Travis Fink is a math teacher at Harbor High School. Some of you might know him. He, he does a great job. He's also one of our AP Catalyst teachers, and he's got nominal scores. But he's going to talk a little bit about the gradual release of responsibility, of turning ownership back over to the students.
GRR is simply a model of putting the responsibility of the learning onto the students. So, it's taking the responsibility of teaching and learning and moving it more and more into the student's hands, so that they're in charge of their own learning, and shifts the focus from what I'm doing to what the students are doing. All right. So, what we're going to do today, we're going to be looking at pattern recognition, right? And then, trying to quantify these patterns and generalize these patterns. So, what I want you to do is scan you. Show me a picture for the fifth case. So, on your board right there, draw me what the fifth case would look like for this pattern.
For me as a student, that on my part, I have to do my work, and you know, thus, that being a reflection on the teacher's work. Because if I get my work done and I get 100%, well, then he's taught me well enough to where I can do it on my own. It's more towards the student. The teacher does have responsibility for getting you the work and having you be informed how to do it. But at the end of the day, it's you that has to be responsible. If the teacher shows you in class, and then you're left on, and you're left on your own to do your own stuff, like when you get home, it's your responsibility. So, you actually put yourself in a situation to, to have to learn it, you know, because it'll affect your grade otherwise.
Match them up and fill in any of the missing pieces that represent them. You're looking at the total, the black and the white, and coming up with some expression for each one of those. So, go ahead and get the paper out that you're working. You should have some of it already started.
Hey, D is the 2N minus 1, isn't it? Yeah, it is.
Look at this. It's like it's splitting it.
Yeah, it is. D for the white is 2N minus 1.
My primary role is to find good problems and structure them in such a way so that students have access to them, and they can enter in the problem-solving without showing them all of the steps that they need to take. But it's through the correct scaffolding and setup of the right problems that students are then able to investigate the mathematics deeply while still getting the chance to think creatively and problem-solve.
The primary role of the teacher is to present problems in a way that I can solve them for myself without just giving me all the information and just knowing right off the bat. Definitely myself, I mean, in Mr. Fink's class, I'm definitely the, the sole person that is responsible for my learning. I definitely think that teaching me to solve my own problems rather than giving me answers immediately is going to be beneficial later.
I feel like it's both between the student and the teacher in the fact that the teacher teaches it, and the student, I feel like, is supposed to like help broaden it and to like help themselves understand it.
In general, GRR is just, I will set up some kind of problem as a class, maybe model a little bit to the students, and then release them in small groups and then individuals to work through them. And it's through the discussions they have in groups, the problems that they encounter, that they're able to form their own conclusions and make their own justifications. And when that happens, learning is taking place.
If you'll notice in these classrooms, students are highly engaged in having conversations that are very critical for their understanding. They're explaining to students, they're supporting students' work, and they're really having to take past knowledge and pull it forward. The next person I'd like to invite is Ms. Katie Wilson. So, you know, you have those proud moments in education, and this is one, because Katie was a former student of mine. And so, the fact that she was chosen as a person to come up and talk about math, my, my heart there, and PLCs, just, she was doing a great job.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. I'm the math instructional facilitator at Southwest Junior High. So, I was just going to talk to you a little bit about what our math teachers do. So, our math teachers dig really deep into... So our math teachers dig really deep into data, which leads to personalization. Data drives every single thing we do, including the PLC process. Things that we talk about in PLC would include, what are we going to do based on today's data tomorrow's second hour? I'll talk to you more about that second. We talk about instructional strategies, interventions, routines for structured student talk, depth of knowledge questions. We have to plan those. Those Level 3 questions do not happen off the fly. They just can't. So PLCs, we have to be collective genius and come based on our data and make decisions on, okay, here's the next couple of lessons. What are some planned DOK high-level questions that we're going to have? Because there's no way to get there just off the cuff. And so how do we do this? So our teachers, our math teachers, keep data. And what does that look like? For every teacher, they keep some sort of Excel sheet that has every single student they have, so 150 of them, and by class, with every essential standard. And we have all the data that goes within. So what does that look like? Well, we have data every day. We're data-rich. We have common data, at least once a week, where we do like an exit slip, something that's a common informative assessment, the way that we can really have some of these conversations. So an example, we may give a common assessment today, an exit slip, a three-question thing, as they leave. Before they leave, they have to be able to fill it out and be able to answer these questions. So then we take it, we take it to PLC, we look at it. Before we even gave it, we already determined what proficiency is. What would it look like if someone had mastered this? So then we bring our data, and we have to be vulnerable and open, or it does not work. So we come weekly, and we say, Ms. Wilson, first hour, I had this many kids out of this many were proficient on it, based on what we decided as a group. Second hour, this many kids out of this many were proficient on it. So we are vulnerable, we put it on our agenda. It's out there, every one of our math teachers, by period. And so the first filter we have, hey, is this a classroom instruction issue? Or is this an individual handful of kids issue? Our kind of mark is 80%. If 80% of second hour doesn't get it, then we have an issue. We've got to go back the next day and make changes. And so I'll look and say, you know, maybe my third hour, my fourth hour, maybe the fifth hour, maybe all the rest of them. My instructional strategies totally worked. I mean, I've got at least 80% proficient as a class. But, man, that first hour has different demographics, and my instructional practice did not work. So then that leads to conversation. Well, teacher B, man, they killed it in all their classes. What did you do? What were your instructional practices? Yeah, we did the same lesson, we covered the same kind of topics, but you did something different. And so that leads to conversation about instructional practices. And from there, we go back to the classroom, if it's not at least 80%, and we reteach and then reassess. So every time we reassess, we're going back and entering the data by teacher, by student. So what do we do with those other kids? That's where we're getting, that's where we're a team. Those 150 kids on my roster, that's not my only kids. All the kids in the school. So we come together, and I say, I've gotten second hour. Student B is really struggling with this essential skill. And we talk about it by student. And then we look at our data, and we say, this teacher, your data shows that you taught this essential skill really well. Overall, you did better. You have this under control. And next time, it'll be another teacher that had it. But we'll do interventions, and we'll pull those kids in. We'll share our kids, all of our kids, with teachers, the strongest teacher who did prove that they had the best data on it. So we share students when we personalize instruction, and we do pull-out interventions based on that. And they continue. They don't give up. They keep that data, and they keep going until that kid has proven they have mastered that essential skill. So that our data is continuous. And we'll add in as many columns as we need on a standard till we can prove that every one of our kids on these essential skills have mastered it. Trying to think what else I missed. Yeah, that's basically the overview of what teachers at Southwest do with data and how they use it.
Great job.
Sounds good. And I think the process that occurs at Southwest Junior High is occurring all across the district. Katie was just, is just very, very passionate about this and was definitely a person to speak on this. The next person we're going to have is Ms. Clint Scale. And the goal of what you're going to be seeing is we wanted to have clear objectives. Students need to understand what it is I'm going to learn today and how I'm going to go about learning it. And then we need to increase student discussions and also student engagement. She is from Hellstone Middle School, so.
The purpose for the collaboration of the group work was so that students have a chance to explain their thinking to others and learn from each other. Some students grasp the content and the ideas very quickly. Others need a second to process and maybe listen to someone else in order to collect their ideas. So it gives everyone a chance to learn from one another in a different way and maybe see it differently than the other person saw it. So let's start off, and let's look at our objective. So can everyone turn and face the objective for me? Would anyone like to read that nice and loud to us? Diego, would you like to read that?
Students will understand ratios, relationships, and be able to compare strategies during the session.
So let's kind of break it down. So students will understand. What's it mean to understand? BJ?
Like meaning?
Meaning, okay, so the meaning of it. Anyone else want to add to that? Okay. Ratio relationships. So let's take a second, let's think about, what do we know about ratio relationships? What do we do when we're the listener? Wait, what? Lena? We look at it. And what if we're the speaker? What do we do?
Speak loud.
We speak loud and clear. Do we look away from them? No, we face them, okay? So let's go ahead and try that. So talk with your elbow partner. What do you know about ratio relationships?
Can you tell me why is it important to have a clear objective in your class?
So that we can know what we're going to do today, what we're going to learn.
I think it's important to talk about ratios because it gives students a purpose and a reason as to why they're doing it. Then we can also relate it to the real world so that they understand exactly where they want to go and why we're doing this, not just we're doing it because it's a standard. At your table, real quick, look and see what strategies everyone used to solve the problem, okay? I had students work in groups because I think it's important that they get ideas off of each other.
I saw like how to work with the graph with ratios combined. Because in elementary school, I know how to do it with graphs, but I didn't know how to do ratios. So we combined it, and now I know how to do it with ratios and graphs combined.
So skip counting. So what did you say? What was your strategy? Multiplying, and you said skip counting. Are those similar? Kind of? Dividing? What else could we do?
I saw people using tape diagram, double number line, and division. And we got a talking stick. We use it, we use it for, we like pass it around. And whoever has it, you have to like have eye contact and like listen to what they're saying. And if you have it, like you have like almost everyone attention.
All right, so now that we've shared this problem, let's look back at our rating scales. Everyone look back at your scale, okay? And we're going to rate ourselves again, okay? This time, think about after this problem, how do you feel? Have you grown in your understanding of our objective? How do you feel about it, okay? Take a second and think, what would you give yourself? A four, you understand, and you can teach this to someone. A three, you understand and can do it by yourself. A two, you're beginning to understand. And a one, you don't understand it yet. So go ahead now and rate yourself. Give yourself a number. What would you give yourself? Let me see, one. Let me see your rating. How would you rate yourself? Okay. Did some of you move up in how you rated yourself from the beginning? Yes.
I don't know if you noticed, but she was talking about a talking stick. And the reason that's so powerful is because when we talk about discussion, it truly needs to be every single student participating in the discussion. And that's a strategy that they learn so that every student gets to have feedback. At this time, if Ms. Dominguez would come forward. She's from Shaw Elementary, and she's going to provide some information.
Hi, I'm Stacy Dominguez, and I'm the instructional facilitator out at Shaw Elementary. And I'm here today to talk to you about math in the elementary school. I could go on for hours, but we won't do that. Three minutes, that's what we have. All the things that you've heard about tonight are super important and also take place in the elementary school. I guess in a nutshell, when we're talking about balanced mathematics in the elementary school, we want to be looking at raising kids who are problem solvers. That's what we keep hearing from our business folks, from our colleges, that they need students to enter the workforce and to enter college ready to be presented with a task or a situation that might not have just one answer, but that they can attack and solve. And within solving that problem, they can do it with fluency. They can do it quickly. They can do it precisely. They can get a good, solid answer that's going to work out. And when they come up against things that don't work, they can try a different path and get to a solution. So in our elementary school, we try to keep a good balance of that, problem solving, which you've heard about with the eight mathematical practices, as well as fluency with math facts, computational fluency, kids being able to add, subtract, multiply, and divide, as well as in the world of whole numbers, fractions, decimals. We do it all. We do it with measurement, we do it with money, time. We want to try to keep a focus of not going too far one way or too far the other way. We want to keep in mind what all the great researchers of today are saying in mathematics about how children learn and best practices that are being shown through brain research, through research of students. And so in the elementary school, if you were walking, would walk into a classroom tomorrow, you would see kids solving problems. You would see kids learning about how to add numbers. You would see students that are really implementing those eight mathematical practices. One thing probably that we've learned through the last few years is we were really good at DOK 1 and DOK 2. And we've got a little bit of grow in DOK 3, so that's a big push, and it's something that we're working on. And I know that our Springdale units and our math tutors that are writing those are doing a great job with them. Just a little note from the teachers at my school, they wanted me to pass along that what's going on in math in their classroom, they feel like is amazing. And what's being passed down through professional development and through the units, they're really seeing working with kids. So a lot of conversation about that depth of knowledge 3 and how we can keep raising the bar in mathematics.
I also just have to brag a little bit on Stacy. Stacy has been a leader in not just mathematics, but especially mathematics in our district for a long time. She is one of the Presidential Academic Excellence Award in Math and Science Teaching from a few years back. So Stacy's been at this for a long time. As you see, we've begun with the end in mind tonight. And so we're now, we've worked our way, I hate to say down, but maybe just in, maybe in size, down to our pre-K because that's where it all begins. We talked about pre-K earlier, and we've talked about the importance of literacy. But I never cease to be amazed when I walk the halls in our early childhood center or over at our LCK or across the district of how they teach math. So Ms. Wolfen Barber, I think wants us to look at the video, and then she's going to explain a little bit more to you.
I'm going to talk about some numbers today. I have some cupcakes.
I can count to 20.
That's great. I have some cupcakes here. Okay, are you watching? I want to know how many cupcakes I have here.
Five.
Five. How did you know that, Peyton?
Because I just counted.
Okay, because you counted. How did you know that?
That there's three over here and two over there.
Oh, so Lucy said if there's three here and two here, she knew that there were five.
And I just counted.
Good job. So how can we show the number five on my paper?
I know.
What would I need to do? Oh, so I could write a number. Right, you're writing the number five. So on my paper, I'm going to make a number. The number five. Can you show me five fingers?
Only one finger.
Yeah, okay. So now I want to do five stars. Can you help me count?
Yes. One.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Four. Five. Good. Ashlyn, can you recount those, please?
One, two, three, four, five. And there's three there, and there's two here.
Oh, wow. That's very good.
Today, we're seeing a number talk with three of my students. And we start with a manipulative. And I pick a certain number, I already have it in mind. Then I place that number of manipulatives in front of my students. And then what they're doing is they're counting in their heads or out loud to determine how many are there. In pre-K, at the pre-K level, children play through their learning, and that's how they're learning things. So number talks really help them get the foundation of math. This type of lesson benefits the students because first, they get to see me model it, and they get to interact with me while I'm writing the numbers and we're talking about the different concepts. And then they get to take it a step further, and they get a practice. It's important to showcase the students' work so that they can feel proud of their learning and proud what they've worked on. And then they can also refer back to their work and help other students maybe get a concept that they didn't get in the beginning. And students also like to show their parents and their teachers things that they've done. So they really feel proud of themselves when they showcase their work. And also, they just take part in their learning.
Good evening. I don't know if I'm telling it here. I just, when we looked at this video, you know, pre-K, everyone says, oh, they're playing. We're just having so much fun. We are, but we are building those foundations. You know, you can look in one of the high school videos. They were working on patterns. We start that in pre-K. We start pre-algebra. We introduce it in small groups. We introduce it in intentional placement in our centers. And then we really focus, you know, what is it that we're wanting them to learn? And we have to think about the concepts of numbers. They come in, they know they're three, they know they're four, they might be five, but to really know what that means. So they have to go down to the basics and just really teach them, what is five? You know, what's a whole, what's a part? And then just start from the very beginning and build that up. And we have kids that are adding, subtracting, dividing in pre-K. So it's amazing what you see in a short amount of time. But we are lucky because some of them start at three. So we have them for two years. So they're not only reading when they leave, but they have a strong, strong foundation in math. So we're excited, and I checked my numbers, and we are six short of being full. So just in case. This is update. But yeah, pre-K, you know, we are so lucky that we have the support of the district. But we also have the support of those teachers who are pulling them for small groups. They're individualizing every single lesson. It's not just, this is the class lesson. They assess them daily, weekly. We started map testing at the end of last year for pre-K to see where they're at. It's very similar. It's CPAA for pre-K. And so we can really see where we started and where we're ending and using that data for our PLCs now. So we're really excited about math in pre-K.
We started with the end in mind. And when Dr. Slugum first began, she talked about the eight mathematical practices. And she highlighted two or three of them. But I want to talk to you a little bit and think about what you heard and what you saw tonight, because I believe we saw examples of all eight of them. Make sense of problems and persevere. I think I saw some examples of that, and I saw, even as the kids talked about it, I think I saw some examples of that, and I saw, even as the kids talked about it, you know, I just have to keep working at it. Reason abstractly and quantitatively. We even saw that in pre-K. Construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. They work together. Model with mathematics. Remember when they were creating that system in the first one that we saw? Use appropriate tools strategically. So whether they were counting little cupcakes, or whether they were using graphing paper or technology. Add to, attend to precision. That is, sometimes when we get in higher mathematics, I know when I was in calculus, sometimes we were looking at limits. But in elementary, two plus two has to equal four. And so we attend to precision. Look for and make use of structures, and look for and express regularity in repeated reasoning. So as we went through the videos tonight, I happen to have my trusty dusty bookmark that I always keep with me, and I was looking for examples of all of those eight practices, and I believe we saw them all. We are working, we are pushing forward in mathematics in Springdale from pre-K through our students who are taking AP Calculus. We are looking forward to how we can improve that as we go along. You have questions? If you do, Dr. Slugum says write those on your card. Look like those. Here.
I've got one more to write.
Okay, you've got one more to write? Okay.
I just haven't read it yet.
Mr. President, over the last two meetings, we've taken a good look at the literacy programs in the district, not tonight, our math programs in the district. Any thoughts, comments, as you make your notes, as we prepare for future focus sessions, if there are changes you'd like for us to make, and that just give us some guidance, and we'll certainly address those as you suggest. I think it's really good. The board meeting has a little different feel to me. Does it to you? I like it a lot. I hope you do. There's some handouts in front of you about upcoming events. Let me go there, because there's some important things that we want to make sure that we've appropriately communicated, and there might be others. On October 19th, Ford Arkansas will be in our school district. And you've heard me talk for many, many, many months about the state's need for a comprehensive educational plan to address the needs of 450,000-plus kids, 234 school districts, et cetera. Kathy, I think back to the Blue Ribbon Commission, and that work provided a great blueprint for the state for a number of years. Ford Arkansas seems to be the closest to the modern-day version of that work. Ford Arkansas has selected five school districts in the state to kind of help bring forward their plan for improvement, et cetera. I understand that one of those school districts is Springdale, and we're very, very honored to be a part of that process. So if you would, if you could, if you can join us on October 19th, Wednesday, October 19th, 5:30 to 7 o'clock PM, we'll be at the School of Innovation and the Professional Development Center there. And I'm sure, Joe, after the meeting, those in attendance will want to visit the school. So we all look forward to that. So October 19th, October 21st is our dedication at the Lynda Childers Knapp Elementary School. That's scheduled from 9 to 11:00, and I know we all look forward to that. Ms. Covington and the team there have really done a phenomenal job, and Dr. Cleveland and our support staff have come on board, and I'm really, really proud of that school and what it looks like. And keep in mind, we have almost 300 pre-K kids in that setting as well, if you can imagine. So it is a large school even by Springdale standards, and those kids are being served extremely well. On the 24th of October is our regional ASBA, Arkansas School Board Association, meeting, and that's at Salome Springs. It's my understanding will be at the high school in Salome Springs, and that is normally from about 5:30 to 8 o'clock, sometimes 8:30. So we'll be traveling over there, and we can talk between then and then if some of you would like to ride with me. I'd love that. If you want to just meet us there, I should understand that. On October 25th, the State Department will be in the city, they'll be at the Jones Center. You know, the Every Student Succeeds Act is coming forward. This is a community talk, community conversation about what the new federal legislation to guide teaching and learning might look like, and how we can interface, if you will, and work with all the families in regard to that. So that's 5:30 to 7 at the Jones Center. And then on October 27th, we have our Springdale Education Foundation Cornerstone Event, really a phenomenal event every year. And you can see the honorees there, the Shaw family, Coach Gerald Williams and Dr. Chuck King will be recognized by our Springdale Education Foundation. And again, that's like a 5 to 7:30 event at the Arts Center. So you may have all those, I expect that you do, but if not, it's worthy of us talking about it for just a few minutes. I would tell you that today was an extremely interesting day for me, and I've loved the school board meeting already. But we met early this morning with the Northwest Arkansas Business Council, and their initiative's going on all across the region in terms of really trying to make the tie between our schools and the workforce needs in the community. And fascinating work, really. Joe's done phenomenal work in the district. In addition to being principal at the SOI, he is our CTE coordinator and works every day to try to help build relationships between the business community and our schools. And he's been tethered extremely close to the SOI for obvious reasons as we've tried to bring that school forward. But continuing to build a relationship between our business community and schools is very powerful. Our Chamber of Commerce has picked up on that, and they have scheduled over the next five weeks a series of focus meetings on workforce development as well. So I think we'll see a lot emerge and come forward in that regard. I don't know how you would characterize this time in Arkansas, but from my point of view, it's an amazing time of transition. We have new leadership at the state level, we have new leadership in the legislature. There's an enormous competition going on every day from the standpoint of who's to be the provider for the school-aged children of Arkansas. The public schools of Arkansas have forever served all the children, and to me, that is a great benefit, a great asset that we have, and something we can continue to grow and build on. But we know there's competition in regard to other providers. The charter school movement in Arkansas is major, as you well know. And we're seeing this sort of thing play out in every arena, within the legislature and conversations within state government, and that will really be at the forefront as this legislative session emerges in January. So again, how do we put ourselves in the strongest position to compete for children and families? I hope you see and sense that in what has made available to you every board meeting. The work that's going on in the School of Innovation is becoming more and more the vernacular of the day. At our meeting today with the business leaders, we talked about competency-based learning. We talked about kids moving at their own pace. We talked about mastery learning. This idea of any time, any place, any pace learning is on everybody's mind, and it will work its way into the legislative arena and into the decisions that are going to have to be made at the government level. In my view, we're probably in the best position that we've been in in decades to see a resurrection, if you will, in terms of the career and technical education programs of the state. We have been about that. I think we will see that strengthened as the business community comes forward and partners with us, and that's really a beautiful thing. So foundation for that kind of work is being laid, like I said, within the region, and I think across our state, and I think our kids will be better served as a result of that. Any comments or questions about what I've tried to share with you? I would really ask you to, can, all of us have to continue to be learners ourselves and really try to understand and define the priorities of the day, and then see how the work of our schools are aligned in terms of getting ready to meet those needs. It's a fun time. It's an exciting time to me. In terms of the calendar, Randy, there's a copy of the revised agenda. I sent you just a note on this, so y'all can be thinking about it. I know you think I put this agenda together. You see 46 people on the agenda, and you think, well, that's repetitive. Well, we did it together, and I think it's going to be orchestrated in a way that it will move and be very inspirational to all of us. But there is a section at 9:55 for the school board to make congratulatory remarks to Ms. Knapp and her family. I would tell you, to have a school named after an educator is probably the highlight of any educator's career. And I don't know anyone more deserving than Ms. Knapp, and I'm so appreciative of the board for making this possible. So if y'all would like to think about that and prepare to make remarks, Randy, I would appreciate you doing that as president of our board, but I want to give each of our board members a chance to do that. So just from the standpoint of coaching, just two or three minutes, Mike, no, not 30 minutes, two or three minutes, and just let her know your support and your encouragement. I think that will be very much appreciated. Any additional information y'all need about this agenda? Let's go to, let's go to the November school board date. I believe that's on page 62. Start with that. And I've just put together a preliminary agenda for our work session, and I really would like for you to help me modify this. This is intended to be very fluid at this point in time. There are a lot of possibilities in terms of where we can use our time best. And on page 63, you can see we're starting with a working lunch at 11:30, scheduled to conclude about 4:30 in the afternoon, and there's a broad array of things for us to pick and choose and dig more into. Even in tonight's meeting, you'll hear conversations about facility planning and the progress that we're making in regard to specific projects at the school. So can I ask you to take a look at that, and in the next few days, help me if you see the need for any refinement in that area as well? Any questions, Mr. President, me, about anything? Y'all want to stretch? You want to take a little break for a minute, or what would you like to do?
We don't have a whole lot more to go. Do you want to keep going? Okay, let's keep rolling.
I don't know if it's a sign of age or what, but I sat there and got stiff. Y'all thought Dr. Ross was picking me up off the ground there for a second? Okay, I'll try to keep my report as brief as possible in the interest of time, but my first area is to report to you our October 1 enrollment figure. Last year, the 2015 enrollment figure was 21,260. I think most of you know that number. We've talked about that number several times. This year, our official enrollment number, I initially thought it was 21,554, but we had dropped a few kids on that last day, so now we are at 21,527. That gives us an increase of 267 kids, so 267 students. We had initially thought we'd be about 150, as far as up 150 this year, so we're well over that expectation, happily so. So we're excited about that. Another big number for us is our free reduced lunch count number. As you know, the number or the percentage, once you're over 70%, we receive just over $1,000 per child that's free reduced for that in categorical funds. That number is 70.7%. So this is year two. As you know, there's a tiered system, so instead of receiving just 33% of that tiered number, we're going to get 66.6% or so. So we're excited about that, and we have more funds to do more with, especially our impoverished children across the district. So it's a district number, and we're thankful for that. Report on the status of school facilities unless you all have any questions on one or two? Okay? I have two gentlemen, I'm sorry.
Can I ask you a staffing, not staffing, your student population question?
Okay.
For example, like at the middle schools, Hellstone is over 1,000. Do they have any crowding issues or is it max capacity?
They're pretty much at max capacity.
If you look at the other middle schools, there's significant decrease in numbers.
Yes, that's true.
Snore Middle's the next plus is at 852.
Yes. There will be a little bit of reshuffling of the balance on the east side, especially as we've added Knapp Elementary. And so J.O. Kelly will begin to grow a little bit, and Snore Middle School will begin to decrease.
It's kind of similar for Central G High as well.
On the west side, Mr. Owenby, we've allowed as many as possible to transfer to Helen Tyson to try to do some of those balancing, but we have a lot of folks that want to transfer into Hellstone, and we've had to hold the line on that and not allow those transfers in, basically due to crowding. It may be a discussion that Dr. Ross has with the board at some point about zoning. He's mentioned that to me at some point or another, but hopefully we'll be able to balance that out over time.
What's next?
We're there. We're there.
North west side?
I'm sorry?
Those two schools on the west side of town?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Interestingly enough, our elementaries on the west side of town aren't growing as quickly as the elementaries on the east side of town. So that could be an interesting dynamic over the next several years.
How are we serving the students in 11th and 12th grade at the School of Innovation? Are they just...
There were a couple of requested transfers that we have approved that are able to take some classes over there, especially the CTE classes. So we coded them to the School of Innovation. So they wanted to follow, I believe, goodness, I've lost his name now, but there's a construction technology. Help me out, Joe. Mr. Mackey, yes, he's a great guy. Would you like to speak to the transfer requests? Are there four?
Yes.
Two.
Two.
I'll just do that here, but we had some students who had been a part of Mr. Mackey's construction credits plans. They had built strong relationships with him, and they wanted to continue out there with their elected credits and actually wanted access to the internship based on the opportunity that they had. So they have access to strong programs, almost to their careers that are kind of...
That's great. Okay, that's great.
We thought it was a good opportunity for those children to be able to move into that area. Any other questions as far? I thought you might enjoy seeing the numbers per school and the total numbers per class. Ready for me to move? Okay. There are two gentlemen here tonight. I don't know if you've met them before, but I'd like for them to stand. We have Mr. Alan Athie, who's basically second-in-command over at the maintenance garage, and we also have Mr. Jeremy White, who is our director of maintenance. And I'll tell you what, they do an excellent job. So if you didn't know them, I wanted you to be able to see their faces and know who they are. They're actually a lot of fun. We enjoy working with one another, and they can really, if you were cutting wood, they can scatter a lot of chips. They're really good at their work, and we're very pleased with the work they're doing. In fact, much of what I'm going to report to you is directly related to the work that each of them do, in fact, their entire team. So I wanted to highlight just a few things with you. The School of Innovation Phase 1A, that would be the north wing, that's the wing that we have mostly completed right now. We're, I've talked to you before a little bit about the... I've talked to you before a little bit about the air conditioning units, those three units that are on top. It looks like the issues that were with those three units, the bugs have been worked out. We're working through that process to see exactly what it's going to look like on the secondary wing or the one-B wing. If we have similar issues, then we're going to go back with Baldwin and Shell and talk to the Dyke and people about how we're going to redo and maybe put new units. So we're in that process, and it's okay. But hopefully, the bugs are fixed. There are some Tekion panels. Do you remember the glass partitions that are in the building? Okay, the really neat kind of equipment, kind of furniture. Well, there are still some pieces that are short. The way we arrange the panels, we need some side returns to keep them steady. And so we're waiting on those. They should be here November the eleventh. I know that Mr. Rollins and his team and all the teachers are excited about completing that. But for the most part, the School of Innovation, the punch list is going very well. It is a beautiful facility. We get more compliments than we could even imagine about the facility. Well-thought-out, well-designed. And so we're looking forward to that completion of that one-B and potentially maybe the final addition across the back. So that's a good opportunity for future discussion. But right now, I believe Jim Miner's in the room. Jim White. Jim Miner has done some phenomenal work with Baldwin and Shell to get that not only in the money for us to be able to afford it, but to actually build it and get it out of the ground, along with WD&amp;D, our architects. So Jim, we thank you, and we appreciate you being here and doing such great work on Phase One. And hopefully to deliver it on time right in December, one-B. So we always, you know... Just rip him, dig him a little bit. So it's exciting work. The Harbor Tech Building, that was the electrical lab that we're building over there. And it's basically done with really no district local funds. Have some race-to-the-top money and many, many partners that are helping with that, like WD&amp;D, MultiCraft, and Flint Co. and others, that are working to bring that little building out of the ground. It has started. If you go by the football field over there, you'll see some fencing, and you'll see where we're preparing the ground. And they've moved the internal drainage, underground drainage, and they've begun the footings, and they'll pour, I believe, Mr. White, I believe they're going to pour this lab this week. So we're looking forward to that. That's going to be a neat opportunity for the kids at Harbor. Two good things about Elmdale. I know we're all excited about Elmdale, the way it looks. Just a phenomenal look. It's beautiful. Looks like a brand-new school. In fact, it's very, very elegant and very attractive as you drive by. A couple of things that are going to make it even more attractive is that Baldwin and Shell has really done a nice job in getting the building in the money, so we've had a little leftover. So they've been able to outfit the entire building with nice blinds, really nice blinds. Not the old style that you have to crank. We're talking nice blinds. We have a lot of technology needed to classrooms, and they'll be able to darken the room for the students to be able to see the technology used, which is really great. Another thing that they've done is they've done a nice job of being able to deliver us some awnings. And I have it there listed as the northeast cafeteria door area. So it'll be attractive, and it'll also help keep students and staff from the weather. So it's almost done. So Elmdale is looking pretty good. At Knapp, we've started the safety fencing on the west side of the property. And Mr. White also visited with Sam Goode at the city, along with Mary Miller and our new principal, Ms. Covington, to put down their walking track and their bike track. And that's going to take place over on this northwest corner. We originally thought it might be on the south side, but it's really a better location on the northwest side to correspond with their playground. So we're well on our way to that. Just a couple more highlights. We'll go down through maintenance. And if you'll flip over to the second page there, the first that I'd like to highlight has to do with the Harbor Indoor Athletic Facility. If you've been over to Harbor, we have new turf on the ground, which looks great. It's beautiful. But the contractor scuffed up the front of the building in a few areas. Okay, I talked to the guy, his name is... It's with Symmetry Turf. His name is Jason Bell. And I had about a thirty-minute conversation with him today. He's willing to pay for all of those damages, all the damages to the building. The problem is, we're talking single sheets of metal that go from the floor all the way to the top, even to the ridge cap. So there has to be some replacement in there. So we can't do anything during football season. So you have to be a little bit patient with us. If you're sitting in the stands, you don't even know. But if you get close to it, there's some damage where the tractor tire rubbed some of the metal. So we're going to try to get that fixed, and he's agreed to pay for every dime, so there won't be any money out of our pocket. The second highlight I'd like to talk to you about is Mr. White. His team, they're reorganizing the maintenance and transportation area out there and the yard, basically. They've sold four of our buses that are well-used. In fact, one of them was wrecked with no engine and no front cap. And we had to scrap that one. But we got pretty good money for scrap. I think it was close to four hundred dollars. And then of the other buses, we got... We put them out for bid and got fair market value. And I think they were close to a thousand dollars a piece. I don't quite have the exact dollar figure. Mr. Hayes might be able to do that. We've sold four to try to clean up our area and put money back into transportation. We're also... I'd like to thank Mr. White for his work with SWEPCO. SWEPCO has a program where we change out incandescent lights and gas lights to LED. And so as you see, we have about, right to this point, thirty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-nineteen dollars coming back to the district as incentive to continue that work. We fully expect that to be fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars over time. So Mr. White did that all on his own. So that's really great work for him and certainly great work for us. And it enables us to put additional lights outside. An example would be over at Tyson Elementary. We're working on trying to put some lights outside. It's really dark, especially when, you know, winter comes around and it's five o'clock, and we know teachers are still there, and they have to travel out to their cars. We want to make sure that everyone is safe, or they certainly have plenty of light. So just a good example for what they're doing. Another big thing that we've been recognized for statewide and nationally is that they're looking at trying to go to a paperless work order system. The number that we have, that's really interesting. We have about seven-hundred work orders per month. Now, you think about it with all the facilities, it sounds like a lot. It is. You know, when you have door locks that break or, you know, windows that are cracked or just whatever comes up. So seven-hundred a month, and we can possibly get more efficient in that regard. So we're working to do that. And again, I think we're in the upper five percent in the nation. Is that right? Mr. White was recognized at a school dude conference for the work that Springdale's done. So nationally, our maintenance department's gotten some kudos. So that's really, really good thing. And the last two things that we want to... That I want to bring to your attention. We have fobs on our keys. I don't know if I have my keys. We all have this little fob to get into a school. You can put it up to the electronic node there, and it unlocks the door. Well, our maintenance folks have these fobs too, but we don't have uniforms per se. So we've gone to an ID system that has the fob and the ID. I had one when I worked at the state, would get me into any state building. It had my ID, had my picture, my old mug on the face, and then who I was. Well, safety is a big deal to us. And if you have just anyone walking through your building and you don't know who they are, that can be a little bit unnerving. So what we've done with our maintenance department is we're taking our pictures, we're putting who we are, and we're requiring them to be worn every day. It gets you into the building, and it also makes sure that everyone knows who you are, that you're supposed to be there. So that's pretty important. The last thing I want to talk to you about has to do with safety and security as well. Met with Lieutenant Derek Bright today for quite a while. We're required to do active shooter drills. You know, it's kind of sad that the school district would have to do active shooter drills. But in today's time, if you're not prepared, then you could create a situation where life could be extinguished, and we don't want that, especially in Springdale. So we met today, and maintenance is coming up with an idea. In fact, they're already doing it. We get calls at night. We have alarms on most of our buildings, in fact, I think all of them. So if there's an alarm that goes off, let's say at Parson Hills, Bayory, Harbor, wherever, one of our people, they're dispatched. Well, if they're dispatched, the police are dispatched too. If they're not in a maintenance truck and they're just somebody showing up, how do the police know if they're our personnel? And it could become pretty serious pretty quick, especially if a mistake is made. So the police departments ask us if we can come up with some sort of plan to have uniform-type look or safety vest or whatever, that they'll know what they look like, and they're unique to us, so we'll be easily observed. That discussion carried forward even on to our administrators. You know, if we went on lockdown at a particular school, where do you think the principal is going to be? Or the assistant principals, where they're going to be? They're going to be in the heat of the action, aren't they? They're going to be out there where they probably shouldn't be. The police would like for them to be locked up with the students and secure. I know that's not what they're going to do, and I wouldn't do it either. We typically run to the action. So we want to make sure that they're very visible and that the police know who they are. Okay? In order to do that, we're going to distribute some safety vests that are unique to us that either say admin, principal, whatever, across the district or admin teams. We're also going to ask the principals to, when they go out to car rider duty and all those things, to have these kind of safety vests on there as well. Because we had a near miss yesterday morning over at our alternative bed. We had a... Since we're a lot of construction, one of our teachers was outside trying to direct some traffic to get the buses in and out, and someone didn't stop at one of those stop signs. And we almost had a near miss. So that got us thinking, we're going to really push forward a safety plan in a significant way. I had Dr. Ferguson. I think you've all met Dr. Ferguson in the office as well, along with Mr. Athie. So we're looking to heavily invest. It won't cost a lot of money, but it's going to cost some human capital here. We're going to make sure that we step forward in our safety, our area of safety. So those are some highlights of today and of the last few weeks since we've seen you last. It's an exciting opportunity to work with maintenance. It's an exciting opportunity, as always, to work with personnel. But I really, really have to compliment the team that was up here talking about math. I was absolutely engaged. The young lady from Southwest, were you all not just listening to every word? She was so interesting. And of course, I know I'm an educator. I like that kind of thing. But it was very exciting to see the work that's here. I'm only disappointed in Dr. Rollins in one thing, that he didn't call me earlier and get me up here, so all of my students or my children could have gone to school in Springdale. Anyway, that concludes my report, Dr. Rollins. Is there anything that you'd like for me to add?
No, Dr. Rollins.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. I have one transfer request that I'm seeking your approval for. The information's in your packet. A student from Fayetteville School District would like to join us here in Springdale. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would ask that you approve this out-of-district transfer.
I shouldn't wait for the out-of-district transfer.
Easy for you to say.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Luttrell to accept the out-of-district transfer request. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
That was simple.
Good evening, board and Dr. Rollins. I have four items for you this evening. The first item, as Ms. McFetridge found for me, is I do have some date errors on it. But Act 1120 requires the school board to pass a resolution whereby it recognizes any individual that received in excess of a five percent increase in salary when comparing the previous two fiscal years. So this would be comparing the years into June thirty, 2015, and June thirty, 2016. You'll notice that there was quite a list. I forget, six, between six and seven hundred names. The majority of the explanations are the person started late in the first year compared to the second year, or they were a substitute who subbed more the second year than the first year, or they were docked off of their salary in the first year due to, you know, maybe being out for maternity or something like that compared to the second year. So anyway, it is a rather extensive list, but I would ask that the board pass a resolution to approve this for us.
I'm just curious, is this the second year we have done this, or has it been longer than that?
I think it's a little longer than two years.
It's at least a second. I remember last year.
Have you had follow-up questions from the state afterwards? Or is it something you've submitted and nobody's...
We just submit it, and yeah. I haven't heard anything.
All right.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion, turning back in the agenda to page eighty-eight, the resolution that's disclosed in our agenda on page eighty-eight regarding the increases above five percent.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Mrs. McFetridge to accept the resolution as presented. Any discussion about that? If not, all of those wishing to accept that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. The next item that I have for you, you know, periodically, I come before you to share and ask that you pass a resolution authorizing us to do business with a related party. This is in conjunction with Act 1599. And so before you this evening is a company by the name of Team Go Figure. This is a company which we would like to purchase apparel from for some of our cheer and dance and band activities, things like that. The only time that they would be chosen would be if we take bids and they're the low bidder. But as per state law, we do need to disclose this, and I would ask that you approve this resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented on page one oh four on our agenda.
We have a motion by Mrs. McFetridge, a second by Mr. Owenby to accept the resolution as presented on page one oh four of our agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
The next item that I have for you is informational, the building projects financial update. You can see that we are very close to nearing completion in terms of payment on both Childers Knapp and the Elmdale facade. We're in the mid-nineties there, so those projects are wrapping up. The School of Innovation continues to progress, and we will continue to make payments towards that project. And then, board, the final item that I have for you this evening is the monthly financials for the month of September, the month ended September. You will note that our revenues are about where they were this time last year in terms of percentage collected. And then on our expenditure side, we are ahead of where we were this time last year. So be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Kelly, I was just curious. I know earlier tonight when we talked about, and Jared was sharing with us, so the free and reduced lunch number that's above seventy percent. I'm assuming that when we did our budget, it was under the assumption that we would indeed be above that seventy percent again. Is that right?
Yes, because even if we hadn't... Oh, now, you're talking about on the NSL. Okay. All right. Well, the way it works is the... We're funded a year in arrears on that. So because we hit it last year, we're now seeing... We're getting what we received last year plus a third of the next amount. So since we've reached it again, now next year, we'll see that amount plus two-thirds. So we're always a year behind that.
Okay. My other question relates to, I guess, some of the news lately of state budget being a little bit behind from the revenue perspective. Does that ever affect public schools at all? Or since we are mandated by the state, I mean, so we've got our guaranteed numbers. So if the state decides they have to make some cuts during this fiscal year, does that affect any of our funding?
Well, Dr. Rollins may be able to address this better than I. This is my twenty-fifth year in education, and that has not happened in the twenty-five years that I've been involved with education. However, I do think it happened prior to my tenure in education. There was a year, I believe, Dr. Rollins, when the state pronouns were adjusted three or four times throughout the year.
That's true. That was in the eighties, and I remember that very well. We were trying to really launch a number of new programs then. Yeah, Mike, I don't think we're bulletproof on that anymore. I sure don't. I sure don't. We can have more conversation about it and really a good question, but my guess is if the budget doesn't meet muster, then the schools will have a proportional share in that. We're currently just under 50% in terms of the state budget, just about 45, 46%.
Something in that range, yes.
In that range, so.
There was a law passed within the last decade which stated that schools, K-12 public education is the last item to fall.
Okay.
So that was not in place back years and years ago, but, you know, of course, it would depend on the situation.
Sure.
How scary the situation was, but that has protected us for quite some time, or at least over the last 10 to 12 years.
We just have to be very guarded, in my opinion, about our zeal to reduce taxes when the economic picture is in flux the way it's been over the last decade. When we reduce the revenue stream during that period of time, it really makes things difficult for our public schools.
All right, that's all.
All right, so that brings us to approving the budget.
I'd be satisfied unless we approve the monthly financials as stated by Mr. Athie.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Owenby, a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the financials as submitted. Is there any further discussion about that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're good to go. Julie, Ms. Julie, you have something for us today?
I don't know. I'm just...
Good to see you.
I'm sorry, I was taking a little nap. No, I just wanted to say thank you for having me and remind you that my door is always open. If you ever have any questions about, you know, I'm down in the trenches, maybe sometimes you don't always get to hear, you know, what's going on down there. So just keep me in mind. I'd be glad to share. Been with the district for a long time, so always glad to help in any way I can. Sometimes I'm on the front line with kids and the parents and so hopefully I can help you with that.
Thank you.
Any questions about anything?
Anything exciting coming up in SEA?
Well, we do have our annual RA meeting coming up in November that we're going to attend. And that's about it for right now, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry I missed you guys the other day at our school, down the classroom, but...
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. I'm going to do one more thing here.
Well, we're very, very pleased always to have our young educators in the room. I've asked them to come forward and introduce themselves. And I do have contracts in my back pocket, so y'all do a really good job here, if you will. Could you just come forward? Y'all just come down to the mic and introduce yourselves, tell us what class you're in and so on and so forth. We have these gentlemen over here going to join us as well. Go right ahead.
The four of us are teachers and a school counselor in the district currently. We're a part of the LEED 21 program through Arkansas Tech University. We're in the third cohort of that program. It was designed, funded by the Walton Foundation to provide academic, or school leadership in high poverty areas. And so in their third year, they included Springdale on that list of high poverty areas. And so we all applied and were accepted into that program. We're in our second year. We graduate in May and we'll have our full certification to become principals and school leaders. So thank you for having us tonight. I do know as well that the district has made some concessions or some arrangements for us to be able to miss some time and do things for this program. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Very much. So thank you very much. I'm Josh Jenkins. I work at J.O. Kelly Middle School, teach 7th grade science and coach our basketball team over there.
Thanks, Josh.
I'm Patty Athie. I'm a school counselor at Walker Elementary School.
Corey Friar, 5th grade at LEED.
And I'm Rhett Barrett. I teach 7th grade science at Hellstone Mills.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, guys.
I'm Sean Cash. I'm actually a product of the Springdale School District, very proud of that and want to thank you all for allowing me to come out. I'm actually here because at the U of A, I'm a sophomore and I'm majoring in kinesiology K through 12. And I'm in administration's PE class. We were actually required to attend a school board meeting of our choice and I chose Springdale basically because of my ties and because of my wife working in the district as well. So thank you for allowing me.
Where did you go to school when you were here?
I went to Westwood, Helen Tyson, Central and Springdale High.
So you spent your whole career here?
Yeah.
K through 12.
That is great. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Joey Kessner. I'm a junior at the University of Arkansas in Fayetteville. As well as Sean, I'm majoring in a kinesiology K through 12 program. I'm from Van Buren, Arkansas. I went to school there all my life, but I grew up to school here for college. Me and him actually did some volunteer coaching for 5th grade football. So that's how I've got in connection with Sean and through being here tonight.
We're sure glad to have you guys. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome to come back anytime. All right, is there anybody, anything else?